Secretary, please call the roll. Eric Alderetti. Phil Becerra.
Here.
Bruce Bauer.
Here.
James Gartner.
Here.
Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Beatrice Mendoza. Here. Lynette Barino.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you. Will you all please stand and join me for the pledge allegiance? (Inaudible) This is a time for public comments on non-agendized items. So, does any member of the public have any public comments on non-agendized items? If you do, please come forward and fill out a request to speak form with secretary. Seeing done, then we will move to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to provide us on the consent calendar?
Motion approved.
I second. The motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on now to the business calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. The communication disclosures. So, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to items on tonight's agenda? Commissioner Becerra, we'll start with you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had spoken to Mr. Gartner regarding public hearing item number one this morning.
Thank you.
And I spoke to Commissioner Becerra about item number one earlier this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And also, I'll be abstaining from the hearing part until needed to participate.
Thank you. No others? Okay. So, we are going to item number one. This is the public hearing for conditional use permit number 2016-36 and variance number 2016-07. And if you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. The action of the planning commission is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the Senate and municipal code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within ten days from the date of the commission's action or unless set for public hearing by the city council. Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. This item for you was a continued item from October 24th, your meeting, where you had a presentation on the car wash, two thumbs up car wash. And I'm here to give you an update on a couple of items that I took away from that meeting here. If you recall, there was three items that were kind of brought up that were of concern to the planning commission. One was noise, one was stacking lane, and another was building design. I'd like to briefly touch on each one of those items and talk to you about what happened here in this last thirty days that we got here to this point here. As far as design, for the first item for design, I met with the architect and talked about the design, and he elected to keep the building as it is. Some of the feedback that we received from his body was that the design was pretty nice, it was unique car wash design, it was kind of a good benefit. And we looked at different ways of changing the roof lines, roof elevations, and at the end of the day, the applicant decided that the design they had proposed was pretty much consistent with the design they're trying to achieve. In your packet, they provided a couple of photographs that I gave to you of other buildings kind of surrounding the property here. It kind of shows how the context of the other buildings, there's a lot of buildings kind of around this project. So, would not be a unique building design to this site here. So, that was the architecture was the first item. Second one was stacking lane. This planning commission approved two similar car washes, one on First and Cypress and one on First and Fairview. I measured both those stacking lanes out there, and the shortest distance is about 150 feet and goes up to about 170 feet. This one here is over 200 feet, so it exceeds what we've approved in the past. I've also doubled back at Public Works to take a look and see how those stacking lanes operate and how it relates to this site here. And they didn't identify any potential concerns with this one here. They thought that the three pay points of this one here, plus the 200-plus stacking lane, would be sufficient to accommodate onsite needs while at the same time not impacting any city streets, which is really what the critical concern is, how it's going to, any project will impact the city streets. This is not an In-N-Out Burger where there's constantly stacking out in the streets. This one here, we feel is satisfactory to accommodate potential stacking lanes here. The third issue was noise. There were some issues that were discussed about how the noise would be generated from the site and how the noise impacts would be on the adjacent residential property. At that meeting, you heard from the noise consultant, he came in and gave a presentation, which kind of confused me even further, quite honestly, but in any event, he brought some information over to you. They hired him to go out there and do a full noise study of the complete, from opening of the car wash to the closing of the car wash, so from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, did a fourteen-hour study. And what the study found with a couple of mitigation monitoring issues here, one, the building, which is the south-facing part of the building, which was formerly going to be glass, now it's going to be a solid wall, so it'll help contain the noise within the site. Secondly, they're going to put up a 10-foot-high block wall on the south property line, as well as extend it north, additional 60 feet, which is shown on your site plan. So, if you go to the east property line and you go north 60 feet, you'll see another block, 10-foot-high block wall there. So, those two block walls, plus the additional removal of the glass and the addition of the solid surface will help mitigate the noise to a level where it does not exceed our city organs. So, with those, that's a summary of what's happened in the past thirty days, and staff is still recommending approval of the CEP and variance as condition. But we'd like to add one condition of approval here. When we looked at the plan and we saw they're going to put a 10-foot block wall, I'd like to add a condition that requires the applicant to put in a growing vines on the south side of the wall, which would be on the residential property, so they won't see a big 10-foot-high wall. It's automatically required on the development site, but since this is an off-site mitigation, I'd like to see us add a condition that puts a vine on the mobile home site as well. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Commissioner Bauer.
Vince, that last condition, you indicated you wanted vines on the south side. There's a couple of elevations that have been provided in the package that shows the south side of the wall, it shows it with site, it looks like Cypress tree plantings, and another one like a variegated brick. Do you know why those elevations are shown? Are those different options? Do you see those? It's page...
Yeah, I see page two of three and exhibit number nine. Yeah, that's just for a lesser purposes, that's not part of the conditions here. Again, we could add them if you'd like, add those as well on there. What we focus on is onsite, what we can do to the onsite, and they have to submit a landscape plan, which will address their side of the property. So, that was never discussed with the applicant, but...
So, are the Cypress trees shown, are they being shown on the adjacent property or on the subject property?
They're on the adjacent property. And if you look at the next exhibit, exhibit three, it just shows vines and show the Cypress trees on it, the item three of three. So, it's two different options there, and we can do them both? The focus on those exhibits are more to kind of see how the building related with the properties surrounding it. That's their whole purpose of providing those exhibits.
Vince, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the placement of the blowers inside the building, if they could not be, if it would not be adjacent to the exit, that could mitigate some of the noise. Was there any discussion on that?
Not specifically. That usually would come in as part of the plan check process, we'll take a look at the design of that. The study they did showed, gave us information on how the blowers would operate and how much noise they'd be emitting. And basically, the study says that, what it did was, let me go back a second here, what the noise consultant did was he studied the existing noise levels. And the typical standard is normally on residential 55 decibels. However, if you have a higher noise level, that 55 goes up. So, in this case, it goes up 20 to 75 because of all the ambient noise that's currently operating in the neighborhoods there. So, 75 is the limit there. Now, when they did the study, they found that the way that it's designed right now with the blowers in the current position towards the end, it would still be below the thresholds that we allow in our code. It would not be an impact on the residential. But we can, if that's still an issue, we can study that a little bit further as part of the plan checks in the middle.
So, what were the decibels after the study?
The decibels would be, well, they measured in three different spots. They measured it on the residential property, they measured from the opening of the car wash, which is quieter than they measured, and that would be, so the allowable would be 75 decibels and it would be around 58 at the opening.
At the opening, what about the exit?
It would be 65, and the maximum would be 75. And that's with, again, that's with the solid wall on that south side of the building, it's with the 10-foot wall on the south property line, as well as on the east property line as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morrison, did you have a question?
I noticed in the update that they said that they were taking the solar out?
Yeah, the solar panels in our previous exhibit were shown elevated and tilted, which gave it the building appearance of being taller. So, they agreed to take those out and not have any confusion or have any further higher encroachments. So, yes, they'll look at possibly putting them on top of the curved part of the roof.
Well, so they're just moving them?
Possibly, yeah, they're going to look at that, yes.
You have a question? Okay, thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
Have we received any written communications on this? Thank you. The public hearing is now open for this item, and I have three requests to speak parts. So, first one will be Sherri Davis.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm short.
You can put it down if you need to.
Thank you. I am a longtime resident of the Mobile Home Park that will be directly behind the car wash. I've been there for 25 years. My parents were there for 26 years before their passing. Both of my children were raised in the park. I spoke with a lot of my neighbors and other people of the park, and we're all very enthusiastic about this proposal because of the fact that with the advent of the wall being built, we're not, we're going to have a lot more as far as soundproofing ours, because we do get a lot of street noise from the other side, and also, we have, on the corner, there is a dirt lot, and we have a lot of dust that blows through there. So, a lot of that's going to be eliminated, and people are going to feel a lot more protected and secure with a high-volume wall. So, they're really looking forward to it. And they're also excited because we're going to have a car wash that's going to be directly on our corner. So, we're all looking at it as a great advantage with a lot of benefits. So, if you all plan on deciding to let this happen, we'd be very much appreciative.
Thank you.
We thank you very much.
Next speaker will be James Kenny.
Good evening. There's not much more I can add that she already said, because I am also a resident of the park. But, you know, there's also, we have, not just that, we have a lot of people right now that like to come across that corner. There's also people that will, homeless, that like to camp out on that lot, which is not a benefit to us at all. We have problems in the park because of that. So, we're thinking that, again, will benefit from it big time. We are looking forward to the wall there and the car wash. We all benefit by that very much. And me, myself, I have talked to a lot of the residents, and they're all agreeable upon that. So, I say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is William Prescott, who's also the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Since our last hearing on October 24th, we studied the concerns regarding noise and building height that were raised at that meeting, and in response, we made the following changes or findings. We conducted a second noise study, a copy of which was provided to planning staff, that measured the current ambient noise level at the residential site to the south of the car wash for a 14-hour period from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM to adequately measure current ambient noise levels throughout the proposed operating hours and compare them to what they will be when the car wash is in operation. The study showed that it is just as loud at 7:00 AM as it is in the middle of the afternoon from all of the traffic along Westminster and New Hope Street. Most importantly, it definitively showed that the projected ambient noise levels with the car wash in operation will be lower than they currently are and within the city noise ordinance limits. This will be a benefit to the residents who live to the south and a positive impact on their quality of life. To mitigate the possibility of any noise traveling through the adjacent site to the east and into the Mobile Home Park, we added an additional 10-foot-high sound wall to the eastern border of the project, extending 60 feet from the southern property line to the north. To give you some additional context of the surrounding uses, there is currently a 24-hour self-serve car wash located adjacent to this project site to the east that has been in operation for 40 years. That wash has vacuums located 30 feet from the property line and only a four-foot-high block wall separating it from the Mobile Home Park. It's my knowledge there have never been any complaints regarding the noise from that site, even though it is in operation 24 hours a day. The car wash that I am proposing would have much more limited hours of operation and a much lower impact on noise levels than the surrounding uses that are already in existence. In order to prevent any noise or light protrusion to the south towards the Mobile Home Park, we changed the south side of the tunnel structure from glass to solid block. And to address concerns about the building height, I spoke with some of the residents to get their feedback and also looked at the surrounding building heights. The residents are not opposed to a building height of up to 31 feet within 20 feet of the property line because it would provide them with privacy, security, and additional buffering from the street noise. To give you some context, on the eastern border of the Mobile Home Park is the Second Baptist Church, which was built in 2000. That project received a variance for building height abutting a residential use as it is set back only 14 feet from the property line and is 35 feet in height, in excess of what we are proposing. There have never been any complaints by the residents due to that building height, even though it includes an occupied second story where people in the church building can look down into the mobile homes. The car wash tunnel under consideration will be unoccupied. Even though it is 31 feet at its highest point, there is no invasion of privacy for the residents because the building height is decorative and will not be occupied by any people. My family's owned and operated Sahara Mobile Home Park to the south since 1966. I've personally managed the park for the last four years. We don't use a property management company, and I wouldn't be in front of you today if I didn't think that this was a good project that would benefit the residents. It would become, it would diminish the value of the park, and it would be a personal management headache for me. And it's my sincere belief that the proposed use as a car wash with the design and noise mitigating features we proposed will positively impact the community and be a great benefit. To address a couple of the other questions that were brought up, the blowers will be 22 feet back from the exit of the tunnel. They won't be, you know, one foot back from the exit as a lot of car washes are. And also, there will be Italian Cypress planted along the Mobile Home Park side. We already have an Italian Cypress wall planted along our front edge, along New Hope Street, on the inside of the wall, and it's our intention to do that along this wall as well on the Mobile Home Park side, in addition to the required vines covering the wall on both sides. And there will be solar panels on the roof of the car wash tunnel and on the roof of the shade structure over the pay stations. We only removed the solar panels that were on the lower equipment building that were angled towards the residents in the Mobile Home Park, but there will still be some on the roof of the tunnel that will be out of visible visibility. And with that, thank you for your consideration. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
After seeing any other speakers, we're going to close the public hearing. And I will bring back any feedback or entertaining motion. No one wants to say anything? I just want to say, I appreciate the staff applicants spending the time to go back, and I think we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting, and there were, you know, pretty big concerns regarding noise, and I think you brought the answers to the table, and I think that that, at least for me, helps me understand this a little bit better. I'm not completely excited that we're that close to residential, but I do appreciate the residents coming out and saying that what's going to be there is better than what they have now, and that's huge for me. I still am a little concerned about the hours of operation from 7:00 to 9:00. Just 7:00 AM seems a little early to be turning on all the machines, so, but if, I prefer it open at 8:00, but that I can also live with 7:00 if the general consensus is there. And that's about it for my feedback on this one. Thanks.
Madam Chair. I just want to echo your comments in the sense that, yeah, I appreciate folks coming out and testifying that, yes, they know it's coming and they're okay with it, in fact, that they support it. I think that was a big concern, as you said, that we're going to have this pretty darn close, and this commission has seen a couple of car washes that weren't so close to adjacent residential, but again, hearing testimony from the community definitely makes an impact. So, I appreciate you coming out, and I think that really helps me feel more supportive of the project.
So, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving CUP number 2016-36 as condition, adopt the resolution approving variance number 2016-77A as condition to allow reduction of required setbacks, and resolution approving variance number 2016-07A as condition.
Second.
I just had one comment to the maker of the motion and second. There was a recommendation from staff that we add a item into the conditional use permit for a growing vine on the south side of the wall.
It's on number 13.
It's already in there?
No.
13, it's item 13 on exhibit D.
I think Mr. Bauer says that it's the block wall, but it's the wall that's located on the south side, and I'm guessing that staff wants vines on both sides of that wall on the south side.
So, this condition is just for the project site?
Yes.
We need to add it for the residential side?
And Italian Cypress too.
And Italian Cypress?
Just to clarify, that's all.
South side is the residential side?
No, no, but the way that this is written, I'm taking it as it's just the physical wall on that side, and staff's asking that we clarify where the landscaping would be in relation to that wall.
To be specific, to say that it's on the residential property side.
Both sides with the vines and then the Cypress.
Vines on both sides and Italian Cypress on the residential side.
Correct, that's the way I understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I accept that amendment.
Okay, so I have a motion, and with the added, do you agree?
Second.
So, a motion and a second with those additional items. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. I'm going to move on to item number two, which is the public hearing for conditional use permit number 2016-39. Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. Before you, oh, sorry. How do I do it? Thank you.
I'll give it one more try, and then you might have to do the presentation without that.
While we're waiting for our technology to come back on, I'd like to introduce to you our new planning technician, Scarlett Marr. We've seen some staff reports from her previously, but she has been working for us as an intern since she was a junior in high school?
No.
A senior in high school. A senior in high school, and she will be graduating from Cal Poly with her bachelor's degree in urban and regional planning in January of this year. So, we're very happy to have her on staff as our new planning technician, so.
You're trying to screw up, Marley?
We don't want to make your first presentation too easy.
Is all staff in here? Yeah.
You have your presentation, though, on your... I do, yeah, I have a copy with me.
Do you want to just go without the...
That's okay? Yeah?
Let's do it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. Before you, we have conditional use permit 2016-39 for Pizza Hut Restaurant. The project is located on 3317 South Bristol Street, and is currently, and would like to obtain a CUP to sell on-premise consumption alcohol beverages. The site is Zone C1, our community commercial, and has, and its surrounding uses are residential and commercial uses on the east, south, west, and north of the location. The alcohol beverages will be located in a walk-in cooler at the front of the restaurant with an enclosed kitchen area and will not exceed more than 5% of the floor area. Site meets all standards of the Senate and municipal code, and the project will provide additional dining amenity to visitors and employees in the area. The standards will ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment and will not become an attractive nuisance. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2016-39. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you. If you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, staff? Commissioner Bauer?
I had a question. This doesn't specify the type of ABC license.
That's correct. It'll be type 41.
And I noticed, just for staff, on these other alcohol-related requests, we don't specify, and I don't know if that's, there's a reason why we're no longer doing that? In the past, we've always specified what type of liquor license we're seeking, or they're seeking, I should say.
I think we did a presentation about this several months ago. I think we did a presentation about this several months ago where we talked about whether or not we were going to specify what the license was. We were always going to tell you what it was, but not necessarily, um, included as a condition of approval because it's not a land use itself. Um, it goes beyond the, the level of intensity is not the land use itself. Because land use itself is the sale, on sale or off sale of alcohol.
Why, I, I mean, I, I guess this is for a discussion for another day, but, uh, and not in particular with the, with respect to this request. But I certainly want that piece of information. I think it's valuable.
Yeah, I don't, if it's not in the resolution, if it's just in the staff report, that's not going to impact it. The resolution is what's going to tell me what they can and can't do.
Right.
So, so verbal, verbal disclosure does nothing except for those of us in the room. I think you, I, if I understand what my colleagues are asking for, we'd like to see it in the staff report. Maybe not necessarily in the resolution, but at least in the staff report.
I think we, we did not include it in the staff report then. We did not explain what it was. No, okay, we will do that in the future, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
But this is, this is just, this one is being.
Beer wine, that's correct, mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you. Have we received any written communications on this item? Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come up and, uh, fill out a speaker card with the secretary. Seeing none, go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, excuse me, didn't we have one, um, email last time?
Not on this item, no.
I thought it was from Pizza Hut.
We did.
We did.
No, not this time, but last.
Not this one.
No. Two weeks ago?
It was, it was a correspondence.
No, I, I believe it was an email on Pizza Hut.
It was an email on Pizza Hut, yeah.
Um, there is an email for one of her items, but that is item number seven, I think, that, that you have and it's distributed. Should be on the dais.
Yeah, we received that one.
But that, but there was an email specifically at the last meeting when this was continued that said that the person did not want to have another liquor license issued. That was for Pizza Hut.
That is correct, yes.
That's what we're saying, that's all we're, that's all we're asking for clarification.
Yes, that's the only, that's the only correspondence we've received on that.
The last time.
At the last meeting, yes, there was.
And it was continued?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we're trying to determine.
We want that on record that we have a communication last, last. Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have any feedback or any questions? Entertained motion?
Um, I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, we go with staff recommendation for planning commission to approve conditional use permit number twenty sixteen dash thirty-nine.
My second.
Have a motion from Commissioner McLaughlin and a second from Commissioner Gardner. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, move on to item number three. Which is a public hearing for conditional use permit twenty sixteen dash two-six. Oh, that doesn't work?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Before you, we have conditional use permit twenty sixteen dash twenty-six, um, renewal of a monop- an existing monopine at twenty-nine sixty-one West MacArthur Boulevard. The project description is a renewal of an existing fifty-five foot monopine on an industrial site. During the, at this moment, there are no new panels, equipment, or construction proposed. The site is currently, um, zone light industrial M1. Its surrounding uses, um, are commercial and industrial. On the east side is a commercial center and, um, the east, west, and se- I'm sorry, the west, south, and north are all industrial. Here is the site plan. The existing monopine is on the corner, right in the middle. The corner of the property, right on the northwest, um, side. Here is a site photo of the existing monopine. The project requires a new CUP to extend the life of the mono- monopole for another additional ten years. The existing monopine, uh, meets all the standards in the San Ana Municipal Code. There will be, um, the applicant, staff is requesting applicant to do minor site upgrades. This include just to upkeep and maintain the existing landscape. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit two thousand sixteen dash twenty-six as condition. The applicant is also here, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Steph? Commissioner Bussar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little confused, so, to me, an improvement means it's going to get better, you're going to enhance it, you're going to do something. But you've said, and then I also read in the staff report, maintenance of existing landscape. So, there's really nothing that's going to be done to it, it's going to remain the same, correct?
That's correct. The location of the mono- uh, monopine and every, uh, and the, on the site is, will stay the same. There, uh, when staff went out, we just found that there is still some landscape that needed to be upgraded and, or.
So, if you could elaborate on what that is? Cause looking at it from Google and looking at the pictures, there's nothing really around it. So, what, what is it that's going to be improved?
It's just a great, uh, the grass. There are patches that are, um, dead grass, so we just like to see it, um, landscaped.
So, we'll have some new grass?
That's correct, yes. No new trees or nothing will be.
And that, and that was in the original condition, so we're just going to impose those on them with the extension?
That's correct.
Thank you. Have we received any written communications on this item? Thank you. The public hearing is now open. If, uh, if you'd like to make any comments, please come up with a, a speaker card. If the applicant would like to speak, it's, uh, you're welcome to come up to the podium. If not, we will go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing. Seeing no speakers, we'll close the public hearing. And I will, uh, bring it back to the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bussar?
Um, you know, tonight we have two wireless facilities for renewal on our agenda. Not to jump ahead a little, but in looking at the second one, it's a lot more, there's a lot more, I forget the technical term, but for the branches and the leaves. Cause it's not real leaves, but whatever those fake phong, phong, whatever they are, there's a lot more of them. And in looking at the street view, it, I mean, it's still, there's some equipment up there, but it's not so bright. This one looks borderline naked, frankly. And to me, I, I don't see, if we're, if it's got to be a discretionary action to renew this thing, I think it should be improved beyond just a patch of grass that nobody's going to see except for the folks that are near the site. So, I, I'm not comfortable with it as is. I, I'm open to discussion, but I would like to see some more additional enhancements done on the pole in order to somewhat mask it. And again, I understand it's not going to be a hundred percent mask, but in looking at it, the picture in the, in the staff report, I have to applaud staff. It does look a lot better than what I saw in the Google street view, but it's pretty bare. Like I said, it's a great picture from there. When I pulled off the street view and passed it around, that's what I'm seeing. And that's a trouble scene.
Well, this is from eleven and eight, I don't know what this is from.
I'm not actually a fan of the pine at all. I just had a pole there.
Like a flagpole.
Just a pole, yeah.
Part of it is.
It's fake looking.
Part of this picture though has an existing tree at the base. So, when you're.
Cause that's what you're seeing.
That's why, that's a tree.
Something of some sort at the base of it. So, it looks very sort of robust and in reality it is, but when you see it from another angle.
I mean, that's just street view from what I'm passing down there.
Yeah.
It looks, it looks denuded to me.
And, and I see that, not just to pick on the one, but it's just the fact that we have one on our agenda that's a little better masked. That, it just seems weird to have this one so bare when we've got another one coming up that's done a better job, I think, of masking the equipment in the, in the poles.
Well, the other one we are doing, we, we routine maintenance in the form of replacing some of the fronds.
Right, but I mean, even the.
So, I'm, I'm not sure if these are just of the time. Does it always look like this?
Blame it on the drill. Madam Chair? What about, what about the notion of not having these fake pine trees at all and just having a pole? I mean, it's a pole and sometimes it looks kind of fake to me, sticking a bunch of fake needles like a Christmas tree and on a, on a pole that's in an industrial park. Sometimes I think a regular looking antenna looks better to me, but.
The only concern I have, that when you take off the, the drop assistant front or the, uh, on the top, it looks almost like speakers.
Yeah, well, I don't know what's under.
Yeah, it looks like an air raid type.
May not be the greatest.
A little more alarming.
But I mean, as a future design, I mean, you could design clever looking air raid speakers compared to the fake pine trees, so.
It's funny you bring up air raid speakers. Downtown Los Angeles had those speakers over in the South Park area and then the artists came in and kind of dolled them up a little bit. And the air raid speakers now look a little more acceptable, I mean, for air raid speakers, so. I think if they can get creative in downtown LA with Cold War era relics, I think we can do that with modern technology here in San Antonio. Just saying.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Bussar, this, this one looks sick. And, um, I mean, just to be direct, and we've seen a lot more robust examples of this to, to at least attempt to mask what we all know what it is, but indulge us and try to at least hide it.
I mean, there's some I've seen, and I, and I don't know which one does what more, but I've seen like the flagpoles that look like they're on steroids. But we know it's a, you know, it's a cell tower. But at least, you know, you're not looking at it going, oh, God, it's a cell tower. You know, you see a flag or, you know, a couple off the four oh five freeway, there's some where they've done, I think Westminster has one that puts their All-America City logo on it. And, you know, unless you really pay attention, yeah, it's a, some sort of cell tower. But it doesn't have the apparatus in your face like this one does. And, and there's been a couple that have come through like that and feel like we just, we really need to, you know, take some pride in, you know. We, we have the power to say, hey, we'd like to see this done right, so I'm just trying that out for us.
Well, is it, is it possible if the applicant here, that it's been required, that there's measures that can be taken?
It looks like it is.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Gregory Mercier, here from ATC Sequoia LLC. Um, ATC Sequoia is a subsidiary of American Tower Corporation who is, uh, basically the parent company who owns this tower.
Did you see Sequoia?
So, yeah.
I think that's just a little ironic, but we continue.
Maybe if we made this one look like a fake Sequoia tree, it would go over a little better. So, in this case here, we, uh, have a fake pine tree, basically. I know, um, I heard In-N-Out Burger mentioned in a previous presentation here. I actually ate at the In-N-Out Burger, uh, before I came over here today. And I don't know if it was in Santa Ana, but in the parking lot, there was a faux, um, palm tree. So, you know, I know that these facilities, the, the fake pine trees versus the fake, the fake palm trees, um, they do look significantly different. Kind of a palm tree by its nature almost looks like a cell tower where you have, um, kind of like a plane shaft with at the top, um, equipment in the case of a tower or fronds in the case of a, a palm tree. So, for the fake palm trees, they kind of lend themselves well to blending the antennas. While pine trees are kind of the inverse of a tower where they start wide and they come up and taper to a point. But on cell towers, that's obviously where you have the equipment. Um, so there's, in a lot of our sites, you know, it's kind of a battle because our ca- or the different customers like Verizon Wireless or AT&amp;T, they want to expand out as far as they can to fit more equipment on the towers. But a lot of times that will defeat the, uh, existing concealment of the pine trees there. Um, so in this case, this is a, it's just a one carrier pole, so Verizon Wireless is the only customer on this tower. Um, and so that's why there's just the installation up at the top there. So, in this case, I think that the, the, the fake, um, not fronds, but pine needles or, or whatever they are. Um, I think those do a good job of, of hiding the antennas, but I, I think, is it, is it the lower part of the tower that you're concerned of? I know here, there's a tree in front of it, but it sounds like the other picture that was around, is it the, kind of like the, the base of the tower that's more visible or?
To me, it's from the equipment down to the base.
Yeah. It looks, it looks naked.
Yeah.
Very bare.
I'm looking at it on the map.
Phil has it.
It's pretty lush, landscaping is very, the lower.
I'm not saying that the, the next one on the agenda is anywhere near perfect, but I mean, in comparison, this one is far inferior.
It'll, is, I thought that we have to live with for another ten years too.
Um, so I, to get back to the, I think, the original question was, could we install additional, um, branching or explore other types of installations? I think in regards to other types of installations, uh, you know, for instance, the, the flagpole with, the flagpole on steroids, you know, with a, we call it a collar. Those there from a, a carrier perspective are less desirable. What we have here, Verizon has what we call like a full array of panel antennas. And so with that, they're able to essentially give coverage to a certain area. If we were to go to a internal, um, like a flagpole, they'd be using less antennas and basically less powerful equipment. Um, and so kind of the, the risk there is if you're going to that type of configuration, they may need multiple sites to cover what they can cover in one facility like this. So, that's, that's for the, uh, flagpole option. For the palm tree, you know, honestly, I'm not entirely sure why a, a pine tree as opposed to a palm tree was chosen for this area. You know, I know that there's some other fake palm trees in the area, palm tree, uh, palm tree towers. So, I'm not entirely sure why pine was chosen here. Perhaps it was more, you know, in keeping with the, um.
I think it's because pine preceded palm. That's probably.
More native to the area.
If you look at the, the view from the property, there's a lot of pine, there's a venee that goes down in there all the time.
Okay. So, just more in keeping.
It's more consistent with the trees that are there.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think if, you know, admittedly, I haven't looked at the, uh, approved site plan from the conditional use permit in two thousand and seven. I know one thing, when I was studying up on the staff report prior to coming here, um, they basically mentioned that the middle, um, excuse me, section sixty-four ninety of the Middle Class Tax Relief Act, um, forty-seven USC, section fourteen fifty-five A. According to that, local agencies are preempted from requiring additional screening or steffing of facilities if such screening or steffing was not required at the time of the original construction. So, I'm not entirely sure what was required at the time of original construction. For instance, if the, you know, plan that was part of the original CUP application in two thousand and seven, if that required additional, um, fronds or branches that have fallen off, you know, we'd certainly, uh, replace those as, as part of this application. So, again, I'm not entirely sure if this is, uh, what was originally approved or if there have been, um, kind of maintenance issues that we could remedy. But if that is something that, uh, the board finds, we'd be happy to replace those.
So, at this time, at this time, your, your position is that you are willing to, to do improvements on there? Or you would like to stay with the original application, which is? or you would like to stay with the original application, which is just to get the extension of 10 years on, on it as is?
Uh, we'd be seeking just a, a extension of the existing facility, um, as well as, you know, any type of maintenance to bring the facility into compliance with any, um, existing approvals that it's not currently in compliance with. So for instance, the landscaping, I understand, needs to be brought up to, um, a certain level of care, um, and we're committed to doing that. If there's also, um, any fronds that have fallen up, or not fronds, but branching that's fallen off, we'd be happy to replace those.
Commissioner, sir?
I also caught that in the staff report as well, but I also know that our ordinance was approved in 98. And given that this is a 10-year renewal, I would say that this thing probably got approved a couple of years after the ordinance was adopted. And also, our ordinance asked that this be a stealth facility, and that be blended and disguised into the environment. So we did have the rules in place prior to the adoption of the original permit for this. So I believe that because it's a discretionary action, our hope is that you or your client will want to improve the facility. If not, we do have the option to go ahead and just deny the extension altogether.
I mean, ultimately, if the board has any recommendations on what they'd rather see up there, you know, I can take them back to, um, you know, the project manager at our company and see if that's something that they're willing to, um, you know, invest in additional improvements at the site.
So would you be open to a continuance tonight, or do you want to see the, the item?
I think if it's the consensus of the board that they would like to see, um, whatever it might be, a different type of facility or additional branching, um, if that is the consensus of the board, then I would like to seek a continuance, so that I could bring it back to the, the folks at, at American Tower.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Maybe we want to have Commissioner Gardner?
Are we at a point of discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, you know, you can, it, it's still going to be kind of a lipstick on a pig. You know, the, the, the reality is, these fake trees are fake. They're not great. They're, honestly, a nice piece of architecture that's natural without a fake tree would be my preference, but I'm not inclined to make Verizon rip down the tower to do that. I think future towers, we should look at with the planning department and saying, hey, guys, bring us something more clever than the fake trees. Uh, I think we, we can do better than that, especially in industrial park, where why not make it look industrial? Why not let it fit in an industrial manner? I mean, if it's in a residential neighborhood, it's full of cypress trees or something else, and it kind of makes some sense to maybe blend it in differently. So, uh, from my standpoint, I'm not inclined to drag Verizon into doing more work on this. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not supporting a continuance, but, but, you know, I'll be supporting it the way they presented it. That's just my position.
Commissioner Gardner?
Well, I'm not of the opinion, too, that they should do any major work to this, but I, I think it certainly, it looks to me that their routine maintenance or something that's, over time, it's lost maybe some of the vigor, and I know that's not because of the drought. It's either because of 10 years wear and tear. And this other tower, they're replacing the fronds on the palm tree, so, the fake palm tree. So, I mean, it seems to me, I don't know what can be done here, if these branches, just some of them can be added or replaced or what, but, and, and maybe it's not the case. So, I mean, if, if that's the case, I, I'm not asking for a wholesale change of this thing, uh, change it from a pine, a pine tree to a palm tree or anything of the sort. But I think, you know, it's going to be standing for another 10 years, so we, this is our opportunity and your opportunity to, to, to make it, you know, as realistic as we can. It's never going to be a real-looking tree, we understand that, but, uh, I think we should take, avail ourselves of this opportunity while we have it.
Commissioner Alderetti?
I'm going to echo, or, uh, yeah, echo Commissioner Becerra's comment. The, the time to do it is now. This is discretionary action. Brilliantly, this is the leverage that you have now. Um, and so you can, I get your point. I'm not looking for a wholesale, uh, upgrading of this, but I don't know what other way to do it that we can't. It's difficult to do it from here. Um, I think we ought to send Verizon back, and they need to do the hard thinking about how to improve this. And if it's just adding a couple of, replacing some of the branches, whatever it is, that, that's for them to figure out.
Commissioner Becerra?
I too want to echo Commissioner Alderetti's comments. I don't care, right? But, but I also want to add that, you know, there have been multiple towers that have come to this commission, and we all say the same thing, be creative, do something else. We hear, yeah, the pine doesn't look right, the monopine, we, we hear that con, or I've heard that multiple times. I don't know why that hasn't been shown in, in what's being brought to us, or, you know, knowing that we're going to have these same comments to just encourage these applicants to really beef up their poles or do something more than a patch of grass that's next to it. So, um, I, I appreciate what everybody's saying. I agree, uh, that we need to do something. And as Commissioner Alderetti said, this, this is the time. It's a discretionary action. It's before discretionary body. And, you know, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, let's see, do a continuance for, what's our next meeting? Or would they like longer?
January. The next meeting is January.
It says December.
Yeah, I thought our agenda says December.
Right. We have no items on the, for the first meeting in December. We have no items.
It says-
So I think we do.
Calendar says December 12th.
So unless you want to continue this item to that meeting.
Well, I'll just say, is will enough of my colleagues be here to, to secure a form for it? So I'll go ahead and make a motion for a continuous to December 12th.
I've got a motion in a second. I just, I just wanted to say that I echo my, my colleagues Becerra, Alderetti, and Bauer on that. This is an opportunity that we have, and I think we send a message, um, for other providers that, that want to come and, uh, and, and get extensions. I mean, a lot of them are going to be, we're going to be seeing some of those, because the, the time is coming near. But I, I definitely like to see some improvements made. I think that they can shell a little bit of money to, to spruce it up. Uh, so I have a motion in a second. All of us in favor of continuing this item to December 12th?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. We'll see you back on the 12th. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the, uh, public hearing for Conditional Use Permit number 2016-27.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Plant Commissioners. Um, this is an application on behalf of SBA Communications to renew an existing, uh, monopine for Conditional Use Permit number 2016-27 located at 2700 South Fairview Street. As previously mentioned, this is also a renewal of an existing wireless facility. It is, it's an existing 60-foot-high monopine. Just to clarify, there was a typo on the staff report indicating fronds. Fronds are associated to palm trees. Um, this is a monopine, so it refers to branches. Just wanted to clarify that. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new antennas or any alterations to the existing site. They're just renewing the actual entitlements. Um, this is the project description. Um, on the diagram, basically shows the location of the monopine. It's located on the left, um, bottom left-hand corner, um, highlighted by red. Um, it's currently in the industrial, light industrial zone, and it's surrounded by light industrial to the north, south, and west, and it's surrounded by multifamily to the east. So this is just a zoom-in to the actual site plan, focusing just on the actual area of the existing monopine. This is a site photo. As part of this application, staff is requ- requiring that the applicant, um, replace all the existing, um, branches that have deteriorated and faded over the years. As mentioned again, the applicant will replace any deteriorating branches. Um, this will also allow for the existing site to be in operation for another 10 years, and the current monopine meets all of the city's standards. That concludes my presentation, and staff is recommending that the, um, Plant Commission approve Conditional Use Permit number 2016-27 as condition. If you have any questions, I'll feel free to answer any of them.
Thank you. Questions, staff? Have we received any written communications on this one? I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If anyone would like to speak, please come up and fill out a speaker card. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back. Good commission. Commissioner, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said on the last item, this one looks a lot better. I really appreciate it. I like that, going in and doing the necessary maintenance to, you know, just do the periodic 10-year up, I don't want to say upgrade, but just maintenance on it. Uh, with that, I'll be more than happy to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-27 as condition.
I second. We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's nice and easy. Um, move on to item number five. That's a public hearing for Conditional Use Permit 2016-34.
So this is also a application for Conditional Use Permit on behalf of Santa Ana River Brewing Company, um, located at 3480 West Warren Avenue, Unit B. The applicant is requesting to allow limited tasting and limited direct sales of beer bottles to consumers at a proposed microbrewery. Um, the application for the CUP is for a type 23, which is a non-retail alcohol license, which allows for small beer manufacturing. Um, the diagram shown indicates the proposed, um, location of the microbrewery. It's highlighted by the red rectangle on the bottom left-hand corner of the diagram. Um, the current property is zoned M1ed, and it's surrounded mostly by industrial uses. Again, this is the site plan just indicating the location of the proposed microbrewery, and it's highlighted by the red rectangle. This is the floor plan of the proposed microbrewery, um, just basically highlighting the proposed tasting area, which is approximately 360 square feet of the microbrewery, which is roughly about 2,000 square feet, and also indicated in the blue, um, which is showing the proposed beer tap counter. It's not a display area, it's a counter. This is just some site photos. It's somewhat tucked away to the rear of the, of the property, so it's not very visible from the street. The current site meets all of the city's development standards. This proposal would provide an additional amenity to the residents and the visitors. Standards and conditions were ensure that the facility will remain as a principal manufacturing use and would not become an attractive nuisance to the surrounding area. Staff recommends that Plant Commission approve Conditional Use Permit number 2016-34 as contain, as condition. Sorry about that. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be more than welcome to answer them.
Questions, staff? Commissioner?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I know there's a list of the other brewers that we've approved or the city has approved. Do they also have beer tasting, or is it just a brewery?
Well, they're currently all licensed to be a type 23, type 23 license. Under ABC, they are allowed to have a tasting room. I'm not too sure if all of them have a tasting room, but I believe the Goodyear Beer Company does have a tasting room.
So does Chris Monte.
I'm sorry?
Chris Monte, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Have we received any written communications? Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Would you like to speak on this item? Please, uh, come up and fill out a speaker card. Okay, good night. Going to close the public hearing, bring it back to commission. Commissioner Becerra?
I like the name of this thing, Santa Ana River Brewing Company. Well, pride in what we've got going on here. Um, yeah, I really don't have any other comment. It looks, I mean, like I think Commissioner McLaughlin brought up the whole idea of Chris Monte, and I mean, same sort of setup, industrial setting. Um, I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-34 as conditioned.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to take this. Motion from Commissioner Becerra, along to the second from Commissioner McLaughlin. Again? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going on to item number six, which is the public hearing for Conditional Use Permit number 2016-40.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Up for discussion before use, Conditional Use Permit 2016-40, to allow an on-sale alcohol license at 2791 North Main Street. Olive Garden is proposing to establish an onsite ABC license to offer alcoholic beverages as an ancillary service in an eating establishment. Per the Santa Ana Municipal Code, establishments that sell alcoholic beverages require approval of a Conditional Use Permit. The site is located in the SD 59 zoning district. It's, uh, at the northeast corner of Memory Lane and Main Street, and it's surrounded by commercial uses to the north, south, and west, and residential uses to the east. Olive Garden is going to be locating in a tenant space that was previously occupied by McCormick and Schmitz. And they are also proposing, um, not as part of this project, but currently in plant check for interior tenant improvements and a facade improvement. Here is their floor plan. Uh, their alcohol is going to be stored in a walk-in cooler behind the service counter and a couple of display cabinets in the dining area. The total combined square footage for display and storage will be less than 3% of the total floor area of the restaurant. Their proposed hours of operation will be on Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Here's a photo of the site as it exists today. Like I was mentioning, right now, they're in plant check to do some interior improvements and a facade remodel. The remodel is going to include wrapping the building with some stone. Um, no increase in square footage is being proposed as part of that project. The establishment is going to have all the required equipment to be considered for an on-sale ABC license. It will provide an additional service and convenient, uh, convenience to residents and visitors. And code applicable standards will ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment and will not become an attractive nuisance. Based on the analysis provided within the report, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve Conditional Use Permit 2016-40. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner, any, Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. What's going to happen with the other Olive Garden? Or are they both going to remain in bus, or, I'm sorry, the other one will remain in business and this one will open? Or what's going to happen?
It's my understanding that the one at Main Place is going to be closing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
I don't really have any questions, other than I'm very happy with, uh, Olive Garden going in there. That spot has been empty for quite a while, so, and the one at Main Place did need some work, so this will be good. This will be great. Just a comment.
Thank you.
Um, on the, let's see, the, the west side of the building, is it possible, are they allowed to? I'm not saying they do it, just kind of allowance-wise. Are they allowed to expand the patio along that Main Street frontage? Or does that somehow impact some sort of setbacks?
Um, it may impact setbacks, and also, they'd be limited on the size of the outdoor dining area before they have to start parking it. And since this is part of a specific development plan, any changes in square footage or building or anything would require almost like a, a zone change, so to speak, because you'd be changing the SD.
I just, I think that, when, I mean, this development was approved long before I was on the commission, but- One thing that, you know, I've always noticed along Main Streets, it's a little, you know, it's kind of back to the street. And there are some windows along there, which is great, and there's a door, so without having them having to come back to the commission if they were to choose to at some point want to expand that patio. But I think what you're saying, it would be a much more tedious, yeah, okay.
And they're going to still utilize the, the patio that McCormick and Schmitz used, right, on the side?
Correct.
Commissioner Meadows?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question about the hour. The rest of the other restaurants, what are the hours of operation? Is it like the ones that Olive Garden wants to?
The other restaurants in the center there?
Yes, the hours of operation, are they the same? That's what?
I'm not sure what those hours are for the other restaurants there.
I mean, my only concern was, and I know this was approved, when was this approved? The Olive Garden? Because it's such a busy, busy location, I mean, restaurant, it's going to be very busy, yeah. I don't know if that's going to attract more people to come and less parking. They offered the wine at the previous restaurant, right?
Yeah, McCormick and Schmitz. I actually think that they had later hours.
They have hours of the same.
And I think the same hours?
Same, or the hours are the same as Main Place, because Main Place, Main Place restaurants are staying open until midnight, so.
But McCormick and Schmitz used to have later hours.
McCormick and Schmitz was open until 10:00, 11:00.
Oh, really?
11:00, 12:00.
Ricardo, what is the, I mean, regardless of what they're proposing, what are the maximum hours that they can actually be open at this site?
Till midnight.
Till midnight, and then they'd have to get a CUP for?
After hours.
And that's because of their proximity to the residential?
That's just for any eating establishments that sell alcohol that operate after hours.
Oh, it's because of the alcohol that triggers it?
Right.
Okay.
But the, just as a point, I think that the Inza, which was the sushi restaurant?
Okay, Geisha House?
Geisha House, sorry, thank you. Geisha House, that was open till 1:00 or 2:00?
2:00 in the morning, yeah.
You leave. Right, I didn't know what. Okay. We were just stopping off by the session.
Wasn't the same company?
Right next to it.
Yes.
So we've all established legitimately, they could be open till midnight.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communications? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. If anyone would like to speak. Okay, saying that, we're going to close the public hearing and bring you back to the commission.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-40.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Alderetti and a second from Richard Bauer. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to our last public hearing of the night, and that's for conditional use permit 2016-42 and conditional use permit number 2016-43.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Applying Commissioners. Before you, we have conditional use permit number 2016-42 and conditional use permit number 2016-43. Conditional use permit 2016-40-42 is for an on-sale premise, on-sale premise ABC license type 41, and conditional use permit 2016-43 is for after-hours operation. Goo Ramen is located on 304 North Main Street. The CUP is proposing to obtain an ABC license for type 41 for on-premise consumption to an existing eating facility, eating establishment, and an after-hours operation CUP for, until 2:00 a.m. Here's a site photo of the location. Currently, the zoning for the, for the project is in the transit zoning code SC 84. Surrounding uses are commercial and a city-owned parking structure on the west side. Here's a floor plan of the existing Goo Ramen restaurant. As you can see, highlighted in yellow, is where the proposed alcohol storage will be, on the rear of the property and in the kitchen area. Here is a site photo from looking from Main Street. The site currently meets all of standards in the city of Santa Ana Municipal Code, and the standards, the standards will ensure that the facility will remain as an eating establishment and will not become an, will cannot become an attractive nuisance. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number 2016-42 and conditional use permit number 2016-43 as condition.
Thank you.
And we also have the applicant here, if you have any questions as well.
Any questions, staff? Commissioner Basara?
I have just one. What kind of license are they applying for?
Type 41.
41?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. We'll go ahead and, have we received any written communications?
Yes, Madam Chair. We just received before the meeting, a written communication from Al Murray in support of the proposed project, and the email that you all received from Jacob Benor also in support.
So the, just the two from Jacob and Al Murray? Okay, very good. Thank you. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come up and fill out a speaker card.
Thank you, Commissioners and Madam Chair. I'm here representing the clients, Goo Ramen. Just a couple of quick comments here, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them. Number one, I'd like to thank Scarlett Marr here. It's hard to believe here and at the beginning of this, that this is the start of her work in some capacity here. We've gone through this process with her. We had some omissions on our part. She was just extremely professional in holding our feet to the fire, always with a smile on her face. Required a lot more work on our part, but she did it in a very professional manner, and I appreciated that. Number two, I think it's worth noting that the applicant, Goo Ramen, has taken extraordinary steps in working with us. I'm an alcohol policy advisor. My partner is Lauren Tyson, former ABC District Administrator. They've worked with us to document a 16-page document, an alcohol plan, that we turned in with our submittal, to ensure that they'll serve alcohol, beer, and wine in a responsible manner, and we applaud the efforts they've taken and the commitment they've made to serve alcohol in a responsible manner. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and, after that, close the public hearing and bring that back to the commission.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Basara?
I'd like to go ahead and adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-42 and adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2016-43 as condition.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I just, I just want to say that I haven't been to the restaurant, looking forward to it. I think it's a great addition to downtown, so appreciate you spending your money and establishing your business here. With that, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, that is the end of the business calendar. Don't need to do absences, everyone's here, and so we're going to move on to comments. Planning Manager, please?
Before you leave the business calendar, calendar, I have a request for you to revisit the action on item number three. It's okay for us to modify the motion, the applicant, because there was no one here at the time besides the applicant, but typically I wouldn't ask you to do this. The applicant is unable to make it on December 9th, or December 12th. He has a conflict and would like for it to be rescheduled to January 9th. So if you could modify your motion, we can either, we can do that, or we can have staff come open the public hearing and close the public hearing, because that would be our only item.
If Madam Chair would like, I'd be more than happy to modify my motion to January 9th.
Okay, so modification, is that, okay, who second item?
It's a big idea, yeah. I have a question.
Commissioner Alderetti, you're okay?
Yeah, yeah. Now, I initially thought it was a continuance at all, but I'm not opposed to anything that was supposed to, so I can vote yes.
Yes, you can vote yes.
Okay. So the, so I've got a motion to modify the continuance to January 9th, and I've got a motion second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll see it back on January 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're still with Planning Manager, please. Did he have any others?
Yes.
This is the first in our general plan updates. We completed last week a application for one of the SKEGS sustainability grants, and that was our big work effort, and we were hoping to be competitive in that process. So, and that will support some of the detail, particularly in the areas that have been identified that we're looking at closely for urban growth. So that is our general plan update for today, and I'd like to, since we aren't going to be having a meeting in December, I guess, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you. We'll move on to Commissioner comments, and I'll start on my left. Commissioner Meadows?
Oh, just wanted to clarify the time for our commission meetings, right?
5:30. Yeah, I think there was a typo on there that, for the December 12th meeting, it's at 5:00 p.m. on the agenda.
I can explain that. We were hoping to have a little party that day.
Oh, but it doesn't matter now, we're not going to.
And we thought we'd ask you to come early and we'd have a little party, so if you'd like to have a little party, we could have a little party on the 12th, but.
We just won't be having a meeting that day.
But we don't have a meeting. So, no, the time would typically be 5:30.
Okay, so that wasn't a typo, there was the actual intent. Okay, we, but, so normal for 5:30.
And just, again, happy holidays to all of you guys.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Happy holidays. Good to be here.
Commissioner Basara?
Happy holidays as well, and also I wanted to thank Vince for working with me on trying to figure out the clarification from our last meeting in regards to the housing opportunity ordinance, and it was just funny, I happened to be online today, and I was looking at some of the other stuff, and I just popped on there, and it seems like everything's right where it should be, but I just, I wanted to thank you for that, because it really, what I read online really was helping me try to make my decision last meeting, and so I appreciate the clarification to help us understand how we got to where we're at today, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Basara?
Happy holidays as well. And just a little comment, just for, as I turn on my mic, just so Commissioners know this, unless you talk into the mic, you can't be heard in the back room. So I could only hear very half of what anyone said, and so if any of us ever have to excuse themselves to the back room, it's really critical to talk into this thing.
Yeah, we don't want you to hear us.
I'm starting to, I think that was part of it, I think it was by design. Mumbling.
We really thought you were going to be in there all night.
Well, I was just texting people, I was sitting there, I wasn't listening to you guys, so.
Commissioner Alderetti?
I wanted to welcome or thank Escalet for the presentation. That's nice, and, you know, she had the computer malfunction. Not her fault, but it's nice. And then I was just happy to see the, the construction or the potential future construction of the park at Rate and Myrtle. I think that, that'd be great to see.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
And happy holidays.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes, I was going to welcome Escalet as well, but she's not here. Pass that along, and happy holidays, everyone.
I think that she did a fantastic job, considering she had a few items tonight, and she's new, so, yeah, congrats to her on doing a great job, and welcome her as well. And just same, you know, happy holidays, everybody. We'll see you in 2017, if I don't see you sooner. Look, January 2017. Maybe you turn.